Five thirty, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first item up on our agenda today is to consider approval of minutes for September eighteenth. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the September twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Bruce moved, met a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Second item, consider approval of minutes from January twenty-second, twenty twenty. Motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Todd, seconded by Brian. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The later abstains, and that motion carries. Next up on our agenda is election of chairperson and vice-chairperson for the coming year. Do I have any motions for chair?
I would like to nominate, it's my esteemed honor to nominate Ms. Lisa Latouche as the president and the vice-president Brian Leslie.
All right.
I'll second that.
Met a second. Do I have any other motions? All right, all those in favor of the motion for Lisa Latouche for chair and Brian Leslie for vice-chair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, continuing on.
There you go.
The first item-
Congratulations. Congratulations, sis.
Okay, the first item is case number RZ two zero two zero dash zero zero one. Applicant Joseph Borges requesting a rezone of property located at one fifty Hubert, being lot three, block thirty-five of the fray first addition to the city of Steenville, Yarke County, Texas, from industrial to single-family residential, R one. Were you going to, yeah?
Good evening. Steve Killen is the new director of Planning and Development Services, and so he will be presenting the cases to y'all tonight. I will be sitting in for any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to be here to our citizens of Steenville. Applicant for this particular case is requesting that the home remodel, but the buyer cannot finalize the loan until it is rezoned to R one. If we look at the current zoning for this particular parcel, it is zoned as an industrial with future land use for retail and commercial business. The proposed rezone is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and staff has no objections.
It's not.
It's not.
I thought it was not consistent.
I'm sorry. That is correct. It is not consistent. I'm thinking about the next case. So, not consistent with the comprehensive plan, thank you for pointing that out. And so with that, we ask the commission to move forward with the decision on the case.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the applicant is here and would like to speak, correct?
Good evening, I'm Joseph Borges. I own that lot on one fifty. When I bought it, it was a house. I paid cash for it because it was dilapidated. Drugies were living in it. I paid cash, fixed it up, to sell as a flip. I've only knew this for a year. I didn't know that when I went to get a loan or the buyer would get a loan that I want to be able to close because it's zoned industrial. I didn't, I should have brought a map, but the property right behind me is a house. It's zoned residential, touching my property. I put like eighty-seven thousand into this house. I've added value, I've added tax revenue. If I can't sell it, then I'll, I'm gonna have to hold it for a rental. But when I bought it, it was a house, not like I put a house on there, I'm gonna add a house. I did go backwards, I did do all the work. My own fault for not understanding the rules before I fixed it up. I don't know if there's any questions.
Now, this house is in between the storage unit-
Yeah, and the storage unit, that's, my parents own that place. And, but yes, it's right in between. Yes, sir.
Is there any intention, any time, any current intention to combine those two properties?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go ahead and open a public meeting regarding this. Be advised, if you are here to speak on any issue, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak, which I will be timing because I can see that there's a lot of people here tonight. So we want to keep this, boy, not too late. If you're here on behalf of a group, you can have ten minutes. So, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this rezon? Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak against this rezon? Okay, closing the public meeting. Here, I'm sorry, Commissioners, can I have a motion so that we can discuss?
I got a motion that we approve the rezone request.
No, you're good.
Yeah, a second, too.
Okay, motion by Bruce, seconded by Justin, in favor of recommending approval. I'm kinda surprised. I mean, I feel like this is a bit of spot zoning if we're to do this. This is a weird area and that-
Hold on, let's go through the, let's go through the board and then we can, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I do think it's spot zoning, but at the same time, this is a deal where, it's a weird deal, in my opinion, where, yeah, you're gonna get some spot zoning and it doesn't match the future plan. However, if it was gonna match the future plan, that's a very small lot, that commercial wise, somebody would have to buy additional lots to the sides and around, and it would end up tearing that building down anyway, which would make it have to come back to us anyway and redo. The current place is teeny tiny, with just a house on it. So with commercial value wise, it does nothing, that lot. It has to be more lots with it, and actually to do anything. So, it seems spot zoning, yes, and it probably is, however, the best use of that land at the given time, in my opinion, is a house as it sits. Future land use, somebody could buy and buy that property and knock it down. So, that's my thought on spot zoning, because I thought the same thing initially, but after you think it out, what else could that be?
If you look at the future land use, directly across Belknap Street is anticipated to all be single-family homes, and there are single-family homes currently on that block. On the corner of Belknap and Park, it is currently on, or currently zoned residential, R one. So, in light of both of those facts, I think it stands to work well with the immediate area.
Any other discussion points? Are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of recommending to cancel approval of this rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. You opposed? All right. That motion carries. Okay, moving on. Case number RZ two zero two zero dash zero zero two. Applicant Ryan Gailey is requesting a rezone of property located at twenty-two forty-one Tarleton, parcel R three zero three three zero, lot two, block three, of the Kaylee subdivision to the city of Steenville, Yarke County, Texas, from single-family residential district R one to multifamily residential district R three.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we'd like to point out some errors on this case and the following case in relation to the future land use. If you look at the current zoning for this property, it's R one. Future land use is also R one, so there's an error in the staff report. The applicant is requesting rezone to build townhomes, and so with the current zoning at single-family and future land use being corrected also to single-family, this particular request would not comply with the comprehensive plan in regards, or would reply, would not, would not comply due to the townhome construction with future land use. So we stand corrected on this staff report.
All right.
Our apologies to any of you that may have shown up to not, to speak on this case as a result of the clerical error.
Okay, but it stands that you, it states staff has no objections with this rezon request, but is that accurate or inaccurate? Because it is, does not comply with the future land use.
The future land use would now be R one.
So on this particular case, when we were working on the staff report, we had looked at a map that showed R three being the future land use. If it had been R three for future land use, then staff wouldn't have no objection to that.
So you do have an objection?
Yes, so that's what he's referring to as the clerical error on the future land use. So, current land use is R one, single-family, future land use is R one, single-family, so his request is for R three.
Correct.
So staff would recommend that this is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Mr. Gailey is here to speak?
Good evening, Ryan Gailey, realtor for Cantor, Steenville. That was news to me, that was the first I heard of that. At a preliminary with the city, Karen was in that meeting, there were no objections to the rezon as far as the, any physical attributes of the property to be rezoned to R three, as far as any type of city services, city water, city sewer, those kinds of things, everything falls into the guidelines. I believe that the property directly, gotta get my bearings real quick, directly to the west of me, that wood is the west of me, is zoned multifamily. That property is recently sold, they are planning to build multifamily housing there. It is already zoned multifamily, so as far as future land use, that property would definitely be multifamily. Across the street, we have some multifamily, also some commercial, things like that, so understand that, you know, we have R one behind it and directly to the east of it as well, so.
And you're looking to put in townhomes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what's the density?
Well, without spending a tremendous amount of money, you know, moving forward with the site plan and things like that, so looking at the buildings that I've built in the past and tried to, you know, fit on there to meet, you know, parking and landscape requirements and those kinds of things, I can fit around, you know, around a hundred and twenty units on it, a hundred and twenty, you know, front doors with my plan, and still, you know, with drainage and, you know, things like that, so without, like I said, without spending a tremendous amount of money there, you know, I had the engineer just kinda, we did a kinda some rough calculations on any type of drainage issues we may have, and, you know, how many units we could fit, you know, and meet parking requirements and things.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty separate units, how many bed and bath per unit are you looking at?
It'd be like a one-to-one ratio with bed and bath.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
Do you anticipate these townhomes to be rental or single-family units? I mean, ownership, single ownership?
No, they would be rental.
They'll be rentals.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now open up a public hearing. I suspect a lot of you are here for that. If you've not filled out one of these forms and you wish to speak, please do so, they're located at the front over there. I'll just go ahead and pull this first one up, Charlene Atkinson.
Right here.
All right, why don't you come on up and state your name and address, and I'll remind you that you, oh, I'm sorry. I'm opening the public hearing, do you wish to speak in favor, or?
No, against.
Let me start by saying, let's, is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody here wish to speak opposed? Okay, Ms. Atkinson, we'll begin with you, and you have three minutes.
My name is Charlene Atkinson, I live at five eighty Charlotte. When it rains, Charlotte floods, those big garbage cans float, all the water goes in this area he's talking about. I'm afraid that if he builds those, then our streets and our homes are gonna be flooded with backup. Also, we don't have a good sewer thing there, and I imagine every one of us has had sewer to back up. They've already got apartments built by Big Lot over there across Tarleton. Tarleton Street is so busy now that you can't get up and down it. When they finish those apartments, and if they build these they're talking about, the traffic is gonna be horrible. That's not counting the fact that you're doing away with my way of life. I like to sit on the patio and watch the sunset, not look in the back of an apartment. I think that when you're eighty-four and you live on a fixed income, you can't move, so you're stuck. And I think it would be a big mistake to have these condos or whatever it is going to be built there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anybody else here who wishes to speak against?
Well, I can speak against, are we talking about just this one case? We've got two cases there.
Right.
We've got the larger area too, that I'm more concerned with, but I'll-
You're more concerned with the larger area.
Yes, ma'am.
We will handle that separate, so. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
The one you're speaking with that is twenty-two forty-one, am I correct?
Madam Chair, can I just explain?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, the first case that we're talking about tonight is twenty-two forty-one. It's going to be a small section right off of Tarleton Street that currently has a home there now. He has purchased that lot, and then he's also purchased the Big Lot, which is gonna be your next case. Eventually, his plan is to replat that into one lot.
Right, so effectively, it's the same thing.
And so, that's why we asked him to bring it to y'all, for his development to move forward, he would have to have it rezoned to R three.
Thank you.
Yeah, this would be easy, right here. This, twenty-two forty-one is this little section here where the home is currently, this is Zero Tarleton, and so that one's next, predicted.
Okay, if we wanna, if you wanna speak, I mean, we'll be hearing the next one immediately afterwards, I don't think you need to speak at both or either, you know, we'll consider it altogether, so.
Okay.
If you're, are you, Ms. Lloyd?
What?
Is that your form there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just filling it out.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Hill.
Okay.
I live in, on the Mimoso Court, back up right there where that little circle is down at the end of that big piece. And I feel like if they put apartments right there, you know, something that's multi-level, more than one level, you're gonna be looking right in the backyards of the people that live in that court. And I have lived on a street like that before. You have people hanging out the windows, saying stuff, hollering, you know, there's all kinds of things that go on, and it disrupts your whole piece that you have in your backyard. You can't even sit back there without stuff going on. If they have, you know, apartments there, rentals, and they're renting to students or whoever they're renting to, there's, it's going to disrupt any kind of piece you have left in your backyard. And I just feel like it would also run the value down on the property if you were to try to sell it. Nobody wants to live up against an apartment complex with people hanging out, you know, looking out the windows right into your yard. That's what I feel, I just feel like it's gonna run the value down. That's pretty much all I have to say about this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ma'am, what was your house number?
Eight nine five.
So she's on that, up here.
I'm not showing it on this map.
I'm further down, but I am further down on that block.
So this is Mimosa right here, so she's probably-
But I really feel like it will run the value down of the houses in that whole area right there.
So you're across from Ryan?
No, no, I'm on this side, I'm in the court.
And those Amber Homes, right?
Yes.
None of us got notices, we had to find out through Facebook or whatever.
Yeah, I think it's, what, a two-hundred yard?
Two-hundred feet.
Two-hundred feet radius.
Which is not very far.
Not super, yeah.
I do get the notice, I live in A three five Mimosa Court.
Okay, so you must be right up against it.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else here who wishes to speak against, against this? Ma'am? Thank you, three minutes. And if you'd state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ija Wu, so my husband and I live on A three five Mimosa Court. So that will be at the end of the cul-de-sac that is facing the forest right now. So we have three major concerns. First is the increase of noise. So whenever there are apartments where we used to live in nearby the city park, and then we live right next to students, and then so during the weekdays at three AM, we can hear loud noises. The second is invasion of privacy. So it will be at our backyard, and then so the reason we like to have this, we would like to have this privacy in terms of whenever we work in the yard or noises. The third point is the decreased property value. So we think that if the whole lot were turning to a, from R one to R three, that will bring down the property value that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And this is a letter that we have.
All right, this letter basically summarizes exactly what she just said. Increased noise, invasion of privacy, decreased property value, so I'll add that in for the record. Okay. Anybody else who wishes to speak against? I have Sally Lloyd.
I'll wait till the next one.
You'll wait till the next one, okay. Steve Gunn, or do you wanna wait as well?
It's in the letter, shall I read them?
Shall I read them?
Yes.
Okay, there are some other letters that we received against this request for rezoning, so I'll go ahead and read them into record. This is from Glenda Spence. I received the letter concerning the request for rezoning. Since the notification letter gave no alternative for voicing a position other than attendance at the hearing, I realize that this may not be taken into consideration. However, my current circumstances do not allow for attendance at the hearing, but I feel that I should at least reach out and indicate that I am opposed to the rezoning request. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Does that person have an address?
Not listed.
Okay.
And then this is a letter from Jeff and Paige Perry, located at twenty-four eighty Phelps Street. Dear Planning and Zoning Commission, as longtime property owners in our city, we are writing to express our concerns about a recent application to rezon two family residential districts, R one, into multifamily residential districts, R three, in the Kaylee subdivision, block three. Some immediate concerns in the following areas have us, as well as many of our neighbors, worried about proposed development. Safety of neighborhood children, increased noise pollution, increased sound pollution, increased traffic, change in traffic flow, increased theft from vehicles, decreased property values. The proposal includes access to a townhome development from Tarleton Street and West Phelps Street. This would dramatically change the flow of traffic on the street, especially for those that currently are close to the dead end of West Phelps. This represents an increased safety risk to neighborhood children who currently enjoy a slow-paced, low-traffic neighborhood that is close to community schools. Also, the value of these lots is directly tied to the adjacent property remaining R one, as it has for many years. As with any new multifamily development in Steenville, it will likely include residents that are college-aged and that do not share the same value as families in the neighborhood. This will lead to noise and light pollution that likely will extend past typical bedtimes of residents in the area. This will also lead to an increase in traffic, a change in traffic flows, and an increase in neighborhood thefts. We, as well as many we have spoken with, have no issue with the development of these lots as single-family residents, as they are currently zoned and meant to be developed. The Mimosa Court development on the adjacent property adds value to the neighborhood while not sacrificing our children's safety or increasing traffic. Steenville neighborhoods need to be consciously preserved to balance the growth of Tarleton State University students with the hometown feel for longtime family residents. This means that certain areas of town should be off-limits going forward for construction of multifamily residences. The neighborhood has been thriving for thirty-plus years, and in no way should it be changed by a decision of the zoning and planning commission to change the status of the R one zoning. We strongly oppose any changes to the R one zoning of these lots and hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission will listen carefully to our concerns, as well as the concerns of many other citizens. Sincerely, Jeff and Paige Perry. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak opposed to this? Yes, sir. Yes, please come up.
Okay.
Yeah, and did you fill, or is this you?
Steve Gunn.
Steve Gunn, all right. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address.
Steve Gunn, that's my area, I have a couple acres there in blue, and I was making a note when we got this notice, there's nineteen homes that back up to this property, so that's a lot of homes, that's a lot of homes that you're gonna be disturbing, you're gonna build a lot of townhomes in the backyards of nineteen residents on that street. As it is R one, and I have no problem with apartments, I've owned apartments for Mr. Gailey, I respect him, he's a great businessman, and what he's done is fine, but as long as they're in R three zoning, I don't think we need to take any R one zoning away from Steenville. We don't have enough R one zoning, I've talked to builders, there's not enough lots in this town to build R one zoning. That's why they're going to Bluffdale, Mountain Lakes, they're going to Elk Ridge, they're getting out of the city, we're losing those dollars from the city. If we've got R one, let's don't lose, let's don't give up on R one. Let's take a look at this, and then if someone, if we're not all opposed to it, let's put it on the back burner and look at this, because we're getting too many apartments, I believe, and we gotta take notice of how many apartments do we have here? Are we turning into an apartment community? We have more apartments than homes. What's the occupancy rate? How many do we have? It's just, I think one lady has, is gonna speak, may have some more numbers on that, but that's why I'm opposed to it, and I think you've kinda gone over the noise, the lights, and, you know, what happens in your backyard. I've been there thirty years, and it's been great, and we've talked to people at Amber Homes, Ace Walker up there, they'd love to develop that someday, the price has never been right, I think it has been lowered for Mr. Gailey, he did get a- increased traffic, change in traffic flow, increased theft from vehicles, decreased property values. The proposal includes access to a townhome development from Tarleton Street and West Phelps Street. This would dramatically change the flow of traffic on the street, especially for those that currently are close to the dead end of West Phelps. This represents an increased safety risk to neighborhood children who currently enjoy a slow-paced, low-traffic neighborhood that is close to community schools. Also, the value of these lots is directly tied to the adjacent property remaining R1, as it has for many years. As with any new multifamily development in Stevenville, it will likely include residents that are college-aged and that do not share the same value as families in the neighborhood. This will lead to noise and light pollution that likely will extend past typical bedtimes of residents in the area. This will also lead to an increase in traffic, a change in traffic flows, and an increase in neighborhood thefts. We, as well as many we have spoken with, have no issue with the development of these lots as single-family residents as they are currently zoned and meant to be developed. The Mimosa Court development on the adjacent property adds value to the neighborhood while not sacrificing our children's safety or increasing traffic. Stevenville neighborhoods need to be consciously preserved to balance the growth of Tarleton State University students with the hometown feel for longtime family residents. This means that certain areas of town should be off-limits going forward for construction of multifamily residences. The neighborhood has been thriving for 30-plus years, and in no way should it be changed by a decision of the zoning and planning commission to change the status of the R1 zoning. We strongly oppose any changes to the R1 zoning of these lots and hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission will listen carefully to our concerns, as well as the concerns of many other citizens. Sincerely, Jeff and Paige Perry." Is there anybody else who wishes to speak opposed to this? Yes, sir. Yes, please come up. Yeah, and did you fill, or is this you?
Steve Gunn.
Steve Gunn, all right. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address.
Steve Gunn, that's my area, I have a couple acres there in blue. And I was waiting to note when we got this notice, there's 19 homes that back up to this property. So that's a lot of homes, that's a lot of homes that you're going to be disturbing. You're going to build a lot of townhomes in the backyards of 19 residents on that street. As it is R1, and I have no problem with apartments, I've owned apartments for Mr. Galey, I respect him, he's a great businessman, and what he's done is fine, but as long as they're in R3 zoning, I don't think we need to take any R1 zoning away from Stevenville. We don't have enough R1 zoning, I've talked to builders, there's not enough lots in this town to build R1 zoning. That's why they're going to Bluffdale, Mountain Lakes, they're going to Elk Ridge, they're getting out of the city. We're losing those dollars from the city. If we've got R1, let's don't lose, let's don't give up on R1. Let's take a look at this, and then if someone, if we're not all opposed to it, let's put it on the back burner and look at this, because we're getting too many apartments, I believe, and we've got to take notice of how many apartments do we have here? Are we turning into an apartment community? Do we have more apartments than homes? What's the occupancy rate? How many do we have? It's just, I think, one lady has, is going to speak, may have some more numbers on that, but that's why I'm opposed to it. And I think you've kind of gone over the noise, the lights, and, you know, what happens in your backyard. I've been there 30 years, and it's been great, and we've talked to people at Amber Homes, Ace Walker up there, they'd love to develop that someday, the price has never been right, I think it has been lowered for Mr. Galey. He did get a good price on, or what, I was told. But anyway, he's told me too that we're losing builders because there's no place to build, and that's what we need. So whatever we do, I don't mind R3 apartments in R3, but let's don't give R1 zoning up in this town. So I guess that's what I say.
Thank you, sir.
And you live at 125 Lyndale then?
125 Lyndale, yes. I have about 300 feet of this.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak against this rezon request? All right, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Oh, yes? Thank you, ma'am. You state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm at 878 Mimosa Court, apparently just outside of the perimeter of people that got the notice. I'm going to repeat some of the same concerns. The noise, the drainage, concerns, safety and security. We have alleys on each side behind, behind the rows of houses. I'm concerned that there's going to turn into a bunch of foot traffic between the high school and Tarleton. Just basically, and property value is my concern also.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak?
Are we still on the small parcel?
We're still on the small parcel, but, but we can apply this to both, I mean.
I would apply mine as a good.
That's fine. I, I take that under advisement, that this actually is going to apply to both lots. You can speak if you wish. And you're, Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Sally Lloyd, I actually live at 525 West Mimosa Lane, but we own property at 525 Charlotte, so we were notified of the zoning request. I echo the same sentiments as Mr. Gunn and the others who have spoken about losing R1 housing. We need to not do that. I ran some, I looked up some information about Tarleton growth for, and I realized that these apartments aren't just for Tarleton students, and I'm not representing Tarleton, I worked there, but that has nothing to do with this. In the past five years, the number of students who were eligible to live off-campus, juniors, seniors, graduate students, postgraduate students, has only increased by about 1,000 people. In that same amount of time, in five years, we've built, one, two, three, five large apartment complexes in the city, and I, and this is just by me going around the map on the appraisal district website, and clicking on ones that I knew were new and checking the dates of when they were built. There's also five, I would call, medium-sized, and I don't know exactly how many units they have, I would say probably about 20 apiece. Some of those are still building, Creekside is still building out there. My understanding is they've been running at 80% occupancy since they opened. I don't believe there's a need for more apartments. I strongly agree with the noise and crime questions that we have. And I was looking also at Mimosa Court, that street, that one block has 18 really nice homes on it. Well, I think actually it currently has 17, there's one empty lot down at the end. That would be a great addition to the area, another cul-de-sac. I think this area is a little bit larger, it could probably hold instead of 18, maybe 22, maybe 24 homes in that area. My husband and I have some rental properties. It is hard to find a house to buy here, we need some new construction in single-family homes. I'm a little confused on the difference between the R1 and R2, that, I guess, what I'm understanding from the conversation earlier is townhomes qualify as R1?
No.
They are, so it is a rezoning request, okay.
Yeah.
I got a little confused on that. But the difference between adding 22 to 24 single-family homes to an area versus 120 units, that is a huge impact on the community, and that is why I am opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else wish to speak opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we decline the request that has been presented to us.
Okay.
Make sure that we understand that we're recommending to council.
Okay. Meta recommends to council that we do not approve this rezon request, and Todd seconds. Do we need discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Do we, does the city have any plans, I don't know, maybe you can answer this, Karen. Does the city have any plans to complete Phelps Street?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time, okay. So there would be no, there wouldn't even be a completion of Phelps beyond Charlotte. Right now, it tees at Charlotte, according to this map.
As far as I know, there are no plans being worked on to open that up or expand that street. That would be something I'd have to get with public works, but at this time, no, that's not in discussion.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of recommending to council that we deny this request for a rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that carries, so that will go forward to council. So you can address city council and make your case there, Mr. Galey. And now we'll go on to the second half of this.
Ma'am, I think we've probably covered that also, we have to do it.
We have to do it, but as far as y'all are concerned, yeah, you don't need to speak again. I understand.
We'll duplicate your testimony.
You don't need, you don't need to speak again. Okay. Case number, RZ 2020-003. Applicant Ryan Galey is requesting a rezon of property located at Zero Tarleton, parcel R73194, Lot 1, Block 3 of the Kaylee subdivision to the city of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas, from single-family residential district R1 to multifamily residential district R3. Stephen, I'm assuming there's nothing new to add?
No, ma'am, same, same situation with the clerical error.
Okay. Mr. Galey, do you have anything that you'd like to speak to?
Nothing that's going to do any good. But I would like to address, you know, just a couple of concerns, just for the record, since we were talking about, one lady that was concerned about the drainage and things. You know, we, we do thousands of dollars worth of drainage studies to make sure that we hold the water where it's supposed to, what's draining there, we actually slow the water down once we have concrete in place, so we actually improve any type of drainage that we would have downstream from that property as it exists now. As for the concerns that, as far as property values, only one property that comes to mind that's similar is the Summit Apartments over off of Lingaville Highway. There's a neighborhood right in behind it, on Overhill, I've got a house over there on Cleveland, all those streets over there. They don't have straight access to the property from that, it's just fire and police access. They've got a gate there and an alley for access there. I have not done the research, but I would bet my bottom dollar that there has not been any decline in property values on those houses on Overhill that back up to the Summit Apartments. There's about 100 or so units there in an office. So anyway, just, just wanted to kind of state those things for the record and kind of see. The other thing, as far as property values are concerned, if you put in residential houses that are like-kind for the neighborhood, you know, you're going to look at around $4 million in tax revenue overall value in those houses there. You put in townhomes, you're going to look at around 10 million, possibly more, in value there. So that tax revenue coming into the schools, coming into the cities, basing, basing your decision on whether or not we need more apartments, or whether we don't need more apartments or multifamily, is, should be up to the developer's decision on that to do his own due diligence and to figure out, you know, what the town's doing, what the town needs, and those kinds of things. So I don't want to be 20% vacant on it, can make a living at that, but I don't feel that would be based on where I'm at now, based on my management, based on what I do. So I just want to make sure that you guys aren't basing your, your decision, you know, making my business decision for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go ahead and open a public hearing, so if you would like to speak to that. Anybody, we'll open a public hearing, if there's anybody here wishes to speak for this rezon. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak against? Did you have a dis?
I just needed some clarification on.
If you could just come up to the microphone, because it's, it's going out live on Facebook. You can't be heard if you're not at the microphone.
The difference in the tax revenue, I don't understand how that is calculated. Say, for example, for the school taxes, that's paid by property owners.
Right.
So how, if those are rental units, how is that?
Different?
Different.
It would be taxed at a different rate.
Is that accurate?
Would it be that big of a difference?
Tax more. I don't know, it'd be that.
It's higher value.
Higher value.
Just the property value is the highest.
Stephen, do we, Karen, do you have?
It would be taxed at a higher value, Ryan would be paying taxes on that property.
As opposed to individual?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come up. And I'm sorry, can I have you state your name again?
Yes.
So my name is Ija Wu, we live in A35 Mimosa Court. This is regarding the case number R220203. So based on what he has suggested, so there are two different things that he's comparing. So one is neighborhood nearby the highway, we're, we are not there, so it's comparing apple and orange. Second thing is that if he is paying more to the city in terms of tax, that means we are, property value would go down, which may be good news for us, but then that also means that one day, if we want to resell the house, we cannot sell it. Plus, he did not address the privacy issue. So would he like to be, have someone looking at his backyard, throw trash to his backyard every single day? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else wish to speak against? Yes, ma'am. And if, I'm sorry, I could just have you restate your name for the record.
Sally Lloyd. In response to the tax value versus, well, to increased tax value, I don't think that's, I realize money, you take, it takes money to run the city. But we also need to maintain the quality of the city, and we don't need for everything to be multifamily housing. We need to maintain nice areas, new developments for the people who want single-family homes. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against? All right, we will close this public hearing. Commissioners.
You want to repeat, Meta?
Yep. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the request to city council.
That we recommend to council?
Yes.
Denial.
I second.
And Todd McAvoy seconds. Let's go ahead and vote, all those in favor of recommending, well, do we, is there discussion?
No, I just want to, just for the record, I just want to, I like to explain my vote sometimes when I can, and I just don't feel that this is the highest, most appropriate use by far, and I think that's entitled to the landowner, so he can understand where we come from sometimes, instead of just voting no. So I want to explain just a little quick why, and, and I feel it's not the highest, best use for a lot of reasons. This goes right into the middle of a neighborhood, it's not the same thing as out on the outskirts and this and that, that's one of my reasons. There's other reasons, but that's the biggest, you're not, you're going into something that's, in my opinion, not the highest, best use of that multi-use. So with that said, that's all I know. I just want to explain that it's not multifamily material, in my opinion. There's other opinions, but that one's mine.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of recommending to council that we deny this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so this will move on to city council. City council will make the final decision. So this decision has not been made by any stretch, so I would suggest all of you turn up to city council and make your cases, again, if, you know, if you truly want to be heard, okay?
Madam Chair.
Yes. When is the next city council meeting? When will this be heard?
First Tuesday of the month.
March 3rd.
So will that be March 3rd? March 3rd, here.
Go vote and come here.
Yes, sir. It's going to be a busy day. The city council is here, at 5:30. Okay?
Madam Chair, before we move to the next case, if I may, address the board and the community. Just want to, again, I don't think this is a case where an apology does any good, but I do want to, I'd feel remiss if we didn't, so to the applicant, I don't know if this would have had any, any bearing on your decision to come forward with a request for rezon had we told you what the proper future zoning was at the time. If that was an error we made at the time you were exploring this decision, I offer an apology to you. Also, offer an apology to the community for, for this oversight on our part, because changing the staff report from no objection to objection obviously may have impacted some of your decisions on showing up to speak tonight. So sorry to drag you out of the, out of the weather, out in the weather for this, but we do appreciate your, your coming forward to speak your, your opinion and stand up for your community. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time. We're going to move on, but if y'all want to run away, you're welcome to. But if you're excited and just want to watch government in action, stay put. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to case number SB 2020-003. Applicant Marcel Lee is requesting a subdivision waiver from Section 155.6.11, sidewalk requirement to be constructed at 695 Prairie Wind, being lot 28, Lot 7 of the River North, 2 edition of the city of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas. And Steve, do we have?
Yes, ma'am, if you look at the background, you see a very extensive list of requirements for sidewalks. If you consider the current zoning and future land use, they are the same. However, city sidewalks are required by ordinance, and consequently, consequently, we do not support the waiver.
Thank you. Okay, is the applicant here tonight? Yes, sir, would you like to speak?
Hello, I'm Marcel Lee. I'm the owner of 695 Prairie Wind. I'm in the process of building a new home there, I combined two lots. In the future, they're saying there may be a thoroughfare through there, you know? And it's a dead-end street, there's no sidewalks in the area, and I don't believe it'll happen in my time that the street is ever a thoroughfare. For that reason, I don't see any purpose to have the sidewalk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Question?
Yes.
So you don't want a nice sidewalk to walk up in front, in front of your house?
They have the whole street.
Well, okay. I was just wondering, you know? Walk to the end and walk back.
All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here who wishes to speak opposed? All right, closing the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that the waiver be granted.
I'll second.
Okay, Bruce made the motion, and Justin seconded. I live on that street, you know I love sidewalks with a burning passion, but it's a dead end, and there's no sidewalks on that street.
You're going to be in favor of a waiver?
No, I am not.
No way!
I know, you got.
What's happening to you?
I looked at this one, I thought, Steve. I looked at this one, I thought, Stevensville, you got me. Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to say it. I don't think they have to have a sidewalk on this one, and I love sidewalks. But I can't, I can't, I can't go for a sidewalk here. I wish the whole street had them. Then, then I'd be, yeah.
The, the street is basically the same as the streets in my neighborhood. They're wide enough to, to walk on the street without being interfering with traffic. It being a dead end, there's not going to be a whole lot of traffic. And another thing is all of the houses have this brick mailboxes right next to the curb, and that would interfere with the sidewalk.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this one? All right, all those in favor of recommending to council approval of this, right? We're, we're looking to approve the waiver for a sidewalk, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, goes on to city council, and they'll make the final decision. All right, so ends this meeting. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move it with adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
So adjourned. All, all those in favor?
Aye.